All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gatchell. I am your lower Paxton Township manager. In typical fashion, I will give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home this evening as the board gets in and settled. This is a business session of the board. We have a number of items on the agenda. First, beginning under new business, the board will take action on several things, starting with the approval of pay application number one, which relates to the 2024 Township paving project. After that, the board will take action to approve pay application number five, this being with regard to the Forest Hills Park Improvement Project. Following that, the board will take action to award a contract to PAC One LLC, this being for the PC two E trunk line and sewer repairs project. Following that, the board will take action on a number of subdivision and land developer, land development items to include action on the approval of an amendment to a declaration of restrictive covenants, being for the Elizabeth Village subdivision project. Finally, the board will take action on the improvement guarantees, the payment of township and authority bills, and then finally hear any final announcements. With all that said, members of the board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Did you rehearse it?
I'd like to call the meeting of the lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors to order. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Navarro.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the approval of the minutes. They're from the August 5th and the August 20, August 20 of 2024, both business meetings. Do I have any questions? Have you all read them? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we came out here this evening at 5:30, it was open to the public. We did have our budget meeting of the general fund, and after this meeting, we will be meeting an executive session. Public comment. Is there anybody for public comment this evening? Nobody? Okay. Chairman and board members comments. Board members, do we have any comments? Anybody? Okay. I would just like to thank the Linglestown Fire Company. They had their open house on Saturday, which ends Fire Prevention Week. Looks like you had a pretty good turnout. Everything was all washed up and shined and, and loved the museum. I thought that was a great idea for your paraphernalia from many, 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 many years ago. So, alrighty, thank you for doing that. I don't know, Chris, Norm, did you want to say anything?
It was a good, good day. The weather was perfect.
Yep, great. Okay. Managers report. Mr. Gatchell.
Yes, Madam Chair, the only item I have this evening is, of course, just a reminder for the public at large regarding trick or treat. Of course, that, that event, I'll say, is recognized in the township as October 31st, Thursday, October 31st, Halloween night from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And we do have that on social media, and if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to help answer those, but that is the, the night.
Do you, do you know, Brad, or most of the other townships that butt up against us, are most of them doing it on October 31st?
I do not know that. I, well, I'll get a survey for you.
Okay, I was just curious.
Sure.
Just curious, okay. New business. We have action to approve pay application number one from New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company, Inc. for the 2024 paving project. Mr. Gatchell.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Of course, the board is aware of the Township's annual paving project. This year's project is with New Enterprise Stone and Lime, Lime Company Incorporated. The amount of this pay application number one is in the amount of $995,589.72, and again, does represent pay application number one. And this has been reviewed now by township staff and engineer and stands ready for board approval this evening.
I hate to put you on the spot, but do you know which roads these are?
I do not know that, and usually I try to come prepared with a list, but I did not do that this time. I can get back to you on that one.
Do I have any questions from the board? Mrs. Thompson, you're looking like you want to. I'll tell you what, can you talk into your mic?
Was this mentioned at the last board meeting, and we postponed it because something needed to be worked out?
It's a good memory. This, the check was in run and prepared, but we had to pull it because it involved a joint project with Susquehanna Township, as well as money for the authority. Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve pay application number one from New Enterprise Stone and Lime in the amount of $995,589.72?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Action to approve application number five from SLC Excavating LLC for the Forest Hill Park Improvement Project. Mr. Gatchell.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. This represents pay application number five for the Forest Hills Improvement Project. As the board and hopefully now the public is pretty well aware, this project really did a nice job rehabbing the Forest Hills Park as part of the, the township board's rather aggressive overarching parks master plan and parks improvement project, which again, when this is completed, we will have touched at least every single park in our, in our parks infrastructure, and of course, Forest Hills Park being one of them. So, application for payment number five is in the amount of $37,658.55. Has been reviewed by township engineer and staff, and again, stands ready for board approval this evening.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Gatchell, how soon, do you know how soon the park will be completed?
The, the actual, the physical work has been completed. Yes, yep.
So the kids are back in the park?
Yes, yes, yep.
And I did.
But we didn't do a grand opening?
No, that one, they just kind of took the tennis courts out, re-put them back in, you know, put the playground picnic back in. It wasn't as big as, that's considered one of our neighborhood parks, where the other ones are considered our community parks, the larger ones. So that's why there was a big ceremony over at Brightville, because that one was over, you know, a million dollars there. And we did get that grant from DCNR for 520,000, so we wanted to recognize DCNR with that. I did have a few phone calls from residents that live back there thanking us for keeping the tennis courts there and not moving them to Centennial Acres. So that was, that was a good move on our part to, to put them back in, so. So, do I have a motion to approve pay application number five?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have an action to award contract to PAC One LLC for the PC two E trunk line sewer repairs project. Mr. Gatchell.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. On September 4th, the township did hold bid opening at 10:00 a.m. for the PC two E two F trunk line replacement and external repairs project contract. We did receive seven separate bids. The original engineer's estimate for this project was in the amount of $3,224,000. At the end of the day, here with the apparent and reviewed lowest bidder of PAC One LLC, the amount of their bid did come in at $3,070,820. So a nice savings there with regard to that project, and it is, this, this project has been reviewed now by township engineer and staff, and does stand at this point ready to be awarded, again, that being to PAC One LLC in the amount of $3,070,820.
Any questions from the board? I just had two. Have we ever used PAC One?
Yes, we have. Yes, and, and GHD, our sewer engineer has had as well separately, good experience with PAC One as well, so.
So now I hate to put you on the spot again. Can you tell us approximately where the two E, PC two E trunk line So now I hate to put you on the spot again. Can you tell us approximately where the two E, PC two E trunk line is?
No, I cannot.
I'd like to know, so the viewers that are watching at home, so they know, so.
I have to start putting maps in the...
Okay. Well, if you can just, you know, in, in our packet, if you can just let us know, you know, where, where it's at. I mean, we know it's Paxton Creek, but just curious where, where the next project was going to be. Okay. Do I have a motion to award a contract to PACT One LLC for the PC two E trunk line and sewer repairs project?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Subdivision and land development. Action to approve an amendment to declaration of restrictive covenants for the Elizabeth Village subdivision and land development. Mr. Gottschall.
Yes, actually, I'm going to turn it over here. Mr. Williams, okay, sorry, or representative, and they will take over.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ambrose Hines from Stevenson Lee on behalf of Vanguard Realty, Inc., the developer. So this, what's before you tonight is an amendment, a minor technical amendment to a restrictive covenants agreement that was recorded when this property was first rezoned, and it's really just to clarify some language that was maybe inartfully put in there in the initial draft to define the limit on a height. So it's one sentence limiting to three stories. So this was an issue that was raised by the Ultimate Builder and their title company. We just wanted to clarify what was meant by the restriction. So we're asking to amend that. There's nothing the township needs to sign. They just need to approve that amendment per the provisions of the original restrictive covenant agreement that the township approve any amendments to that. So that's what we're asking for tonight. If there are any questions, we're happy to answer those.
Board, do you have any questions? Any questions? Would you have any questions, Pamela, on the declaration of the restrictive covenants for Elizabeth Village? They just added one line that they needed. Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to approve the amendment to declaration of restricted covenants for the Elizabeth Village subdivision and land development?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Improvement guarantees. I think we only have two. Mr. Carwash is an extension and 1198 Nacklin Farms Court. Any questions from the board?
Now, what's an extension?
Meaning they're just going on, like, they're not finished yet, so they've asked for the extension, yeah, for the improvement guarantee. Yep. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the improvement guarantees?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Payment of bills. We have lower Paxton Township, lower Paxton Township Authority. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that we pay our bills as outlined in the, in the packet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any announcements? Any announcements at all before we close? It's a short business meeting tonight. No announcements? Mr. Gottschall, Mr. Miller?
No, thank you.
All right. Our next meeting will be, sorry, here, it's not in there. Hang on here. Well, unfortunately, it's not on there either.
Wednesday, November 6th, 5:30.
Okay, it's not on here. Yes, that will be Wednesday, November 6th. We don't meet on election night, so we always move our meetings to the night after, so that will be November 6th, Wednesday, at 7:00 o'clock in this room, and that will be a business meeting, yeah. Will there be any workshop before that, Brad?
I'm sorry, before the...
Before the November 6th meeting?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. All right. With that said, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all for...